Senator Regis Agitaya.
Oi.
Senator Rukubai Kikuo Inabo.
Oi.
Senator Jonathan Shoy Saal.
Oi.
Senator Stevenson J. Quartey.
Oi.
Senator TJ Imru Ramosaw.
Oi.
Senator Mark Wairbalau Rudim.
Oi.
Senator Umi Sengbaw.
Oi.
Senator Kazuki El Taps Sungino.
Oi.
Senator Andrew Tabalwal.
Oi.
Senator Mason Ngire Abangal Whips. Floor Leader Cecilil Aldabel.
Oi.
Vice President Karai Mariur.
Oi.
President Haukons Paulis.
Oi.
Mister President, Tanganiakorum.
Maria Kurum bodontira floor leader gidil Senator Aldabel ambolongtigay girdira relet Senator Aldabel.
President Mal mutal malungil itasil sil mergao ma taqal vice president tergid ma arbeq taqal senators presentir al session. Iga demobl molmra sessioner gid ma sel debo misra sel item four reading and adaptio na journal ndiaga ngari ngi. Ma demor sel item five. Mung tanoutar sel imol communication office of president, the press com eleven dash forty one. Tia nga transmitter letter sel giril sel ministry organization bill. Se ngara ambatat el al time ma bota inouteringim sel debora appropriate parta calendar discussing. Nada malumal ma ndiaga ngara item six, adeborra item seven, nganiya imol communication, amna ra house of delegates, communication eleven dash sixteen. Tia nga transmitter house bill eleven dash two dash one HD one. Direkt cloud to trail bill lampasra house ma di bota noteringim sel debora appropriate parta calendar. Eh, kada continue mora item eight, report of standing committees. Ma mumma da adaptra standing committee report eleven dash twenty seven. Tia nga girila house bill eleven dash twenty one S.
Si da motion namdung esegna boguntira chairmanera committee ra JGA Senator Isal bol buskira report, Senator Isal.
Mamshulana atyal, Mister President. Direk malungil afternoon mergao, marbecla adil attendanse. Ra mal yarwudu Mister Becla Adil tal klovisabusa ma raka suus ma wudu nganiagora mo another emergency dingora din dongil busul. Dorengakla ngatangat. Magote, Mister President, ta we ra bogu reported tal standing committee report number eleven dash twenty seven. Nge reporta mo musadra aldashamola. Nge house bill eleven dash twenty dash one S. Nge laa mo aldashamola mo melot ra title foura Palau National Gold. Mo ru leem trigel jas ra god ra Supreme Court Abulbelawa mostu aril mo muil remula orielir. Ra andera laa ma constitution for other legal purposes. Direk mal iswak egote orengasulir arbecli member ra gamitir gau. Ra JGA logia vice chairman ngiras Senator Aldabel. Member Karai Mariur, member Mark Rudim, member Mason Whips. Members Dr. Stevenson Quartey. Member Rukubai Inabo, mostu aril dimne el al seals to sign a tear report. Nte eda se ber merawla. Nada de sa Whipsa tia nganbi understand asing his back. Mung welcome him back wherever he is until we see him, rasision. Eh, nomosaw riya temel sanita report, mung all members amel sanita report. Mister President, tal aldashamola abet intuisi ngia tra house of delegates, ra abriri serame seventeen twenty oh one. Emergue, el teame ontila His Excellency Sir Ronald Mitch Junior, Saint Abulbelawa. Il mergao mas bigel wasibom to pass a tear bill. Met tear billa minarala duh reading ra house of delegates, sera April seven twenty oh twenty one. Nte transmitted nera senet, osi siul seals. Iga deme intuisi ngisegidil April fourteen twenty twenty one. Ya bill was pass tra first reading, eh, kaipister president tamde iferni merakamitir gara JGA for review and reporting. Met tal aldashamola eh, Mister President, tanganiya erul, mokte ngi. Magote, mokte ngi ya mo modiisel chapter foura section two oh one, mummo ated tia eda laa ngara buksela, ngamo ated ngimsel fourteenth amendment, mo ra utemelala Abulbelawa. Nge amilangala second kankan, ya Abulbelawa nesengi ngisera a twenty oh eight. El tey gidil BS el fourteenth amendment, mo ra utemelala Abulbelawa amlo, modiima, malubamlo. Remove rishel limitation, rishel mal maximum number ra Supreme Court associate justice. Emori quara chief justice. Emo implement ra separation of justices, se ngarbabul god, lomodori kasi pale division. Al sugum olbi ra galulau, a appropriate aoudou den mo rishegidil BS logis. Mung waise, Mister President, ndit tay gidil section ra two oh one ra title foura PNC, a dirga toga ngara alcela dega provides for a maximum or six associate justice sel mutela along with the chief justice. It shall be the member of both divisions. Therefore eh, tal aldashamola amorulee mung eh, 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 be go se nganiya BS la amendment, mo ra utemelala. Il giril tay gidil toyo. Tear billa mo makes necessary edit, nwa ra section two oh one. Mummo ated ngim tay gidil BS. Il constitutional language, se ngara kempo, togo ni tay gidil fourteenth amendment. A ongerungel mokteka tal aldashamola amo remove malubamongo betisel existing language, il nga tay gidil section two oh one ra for PNC. Il prohibit apart time justice, associate justice from issuing writ, agel nidoswellot totra god, malubam order ruling, malubam other process or act while absent from the Republic of Palau. Giril justice, il djalak kerbelaw. Instead, tear billa propose sel mo add language, mo ra two oh one, section two oh one ra for PNC. Il mo allow ra any Supreme Court justice. Il mo fully perform agel jurist ngi while of Ireland, giril justice, akkerar one, giril one saival ngeltang. Including but not limited to conducting proceedings remotely. Malutu diroide, yaraga tay gidil BS technology, eh, issue a writ order, ruling, decision, judgment or opinion. Agel urilir ra god, we dil ngarbelawe, ngaragort, orin sakais. Beshen mo mesasel juristari planning, set tal aldashamola eh emo explain wasin ngarama tial chensa agirida merur ngi. Mung waise. Len, tegal bebe tegal juristari. Tear juristari regi, prans regida, ori laa ra part time justice, kerakroide ra Abulbelawa, yakala ngatcel belaw. Il mes tep ine, eh, orin sakaisis. When a trigel full time justice, kerbelawa, ambo djalasabi lo ren sakal case, are refused from dispute because of some personal interest or conflict of interest or what have you. However, a current restrictions sel logiu tial pandemic eh, am lasto tegal adil justice ngara of Ireland trouble merbelaw wa imamadi. Which means, agel cases, tira assign to part time or rings. Eh, mo tay gidil of Ireland justice will remain nede ele daga, malte al merda mo. Mutmokla wele tota iwatasal. Tear billa also cite technological advances that allow for effective, fair, efficient remote court proceedings. Il mo remove ra diopifal restrictions from the law. Billa also includes the toga ngara alcel, unless waived, all proceedings and conducted remotely. Shall be consistent with Paris constitutional rights. Laa Abulbelawa ma arul sa Supreme Court Abulbelawa. Mung ngay tayda elwada stal bilbitiga gamitir gau, be review recommend, giril tal aldashamola, magote gamitir gamlo conductora, agora kloos, thorough review, a comprehensive review tear bill. Eh, support ra intent ngi. Espat our review, ya gamitir gau, mostu aril solicit a feedback from juristari. Imal hapin, mostu amla receive a written comments from the president. From the presiding of the justice of Supreme Court, Abulbelawa trial division. Honorable Kathleen M. Salee. Eh, ya comment ngi ngaljass Salee, orin astral gamitil notegat time, il mo feran ol ngitra juristari, mo tibia perspective, ngiril tial global god aldashamola. Il mo confirm with the fourteenth amendment, the constitution. A presiding Justice Salee also noted that President Whips recently appointed four part time justices to the trial division, diga ngara outside of Palau. For cases where all or some of the resident justices are refused. Mung waise, indeed, tay gidil section, the two oh one title foura, adigat amend ngi. Mung dirga waise gid eh, because of this global pandemic, laa hold a trouble. Tear laa alinaqta ngi, merda molaa, tegal justice, mostu aril perform orielir while outside of Palau. Mung waise, Mister President eh a presiding, Justice Salee, direct mene note et tial comment ngi, merakamitir rishel babil ngela, chief justice, always iraigalaw. Sera February seventeen twenty twenty one, n dimora President Whips. Et tial tengamir ngia belga per ngil mergao, presidenta senet, Senator Paulis, ma speaker of house, delegate Sabina Anastasio. Eh, as the administrative head of the Palau Jurisariya, Chief Justice Irigalawa, ulais, tial tengamir ngisera February seventeen. Eh, requesta President Whips assistance in introducing tay gidil aldashamola. Il mo amend ra for PNC, section two oh one. Bulvul consistent ngi ma BS toyo ngara kempo, rishegidil fourteenth amendment. Mung tia report, ngari ngi say gidil, committee, asim ne global gula gi, demo otisel language. Ngar shel muttel kempol giril tay gidil we rial justice. Eh, gi mo etiab es for the record, se tay gidil abesel language, malbataq se gidil page three of four. Rishel midil, imora barom, lo otiam uttel language, se gidil section ra utemelala al article ten, section two of ROP constitution. Ya ngani tay gidil BS. Gamitir gamalungil nulalia member ra kamitir ngitulka, kawe, Mister President, ma Senator Rudim. Alakalubita Senator Quartey amna tial kankan, malaware tay gidil provision fourteenth amendment, ma mikuli mori say gidil ngari ngi, tar gniw. Kalubeni member, togora swal musi, say agel gidil differences, rishel muttel toyo ngara constitution. Ga tial BS, sateal, malmshul.
Si da gamitir report, namomre, malngari ngi, member sarakamitil soril mori ya aldusul ma teginil girile, meski matigalim. Senator Mariur.
President, ngari member ra kamitin, dimlo ora dekalasabekel goritya ra a chairman, ma kodi goritya wasin sial nomul tial pandemic, ngari ngi ya al justice, sel na outside, yaraga tay gidil court proceedings, sel ngari ngi, tira participate ma. Adigera wasit, tial laa, ndimnesto trigel part time justice, trigel full time, masabil ngara outside eh eh, sabil ngaraga tay gidil court proceedings, ser outside ma belaw, bongla tay gidil BS, technology.
Tiala uwe gare.
Uwe ra, monmon, aktim mutal goritya, ngaringa gidil, adra arosial ble da, ngel ne, direkal ble da ah, ripsa odra ba tial belaw, ngay gidil, amno ra ngarade, mergoe, mo ngitay gidil close order, sumung understand wasin dingara ngarade, ngel adi agal part time, ngel full time, adigera wasi, ala, ndimla ala ra full time, ndir part time, adina kalasabi participeta. Akwadi, umlo dja katemi, gorra malmasateal, atril adra god, eh, president, um tikri, man, sumdimi.
Nada, ndimnak, ki mo gare ngi, ndimnak, akamitim, dalsabekel goritila gidil ndi indoniya, atel, lega, mo du, ra chief justice in person, logeril, se tiam lahapin en kuase oi. Na talhapin, nding adimnagala ngara trial division case, amnara appeal. Eh, ndi sabedel muttel, mo goritya gidil, mo gor magaid, aldashamala global gula. Adod ngelo, wasin ngari atal, lektirekl gorra amna ar menesel, wasin ngari ngatam, SP, nar outside. Eh, holda hearing. Ndi ndimnagala jas. Hmm, lawyers, ya justices were in Palau, but the lawyers were outside. Ndi ndiagod ngela, wasi, a justice na talhapin, asubun, lahapin, laa malamala, utemelala ah, malamala fori, ah malamala asel laa, ngara ngatera constitution, ndi intomali sel ngara a for PNC two oh one, balbatakl, nisel PNC two oh one, malbatakl, pasig ngel ra justice, ser ngarbelawe. Orin sakal case, ndi suguma, al justice sangar tia, ngarguk atonis sangar outside, se gidam lahapin. Sulam.
Oi, ya President, kodi goritya gidil, umdasu wasin na direkala important, ta dgerira ngungilal, sugum, sabedel, mo kethmok, tial pandemic, amna ru leem, mo kethmok, mo gorra wasi ma madangil wasin sabedel ngartang, ngari ngi tay gidil cases, sabedel jas, ngar outside, participate, mal sugum, mung elat tear billa, adi addresses tay gidil part time justice. Mung, al sugum, gorra, direkal sabedel full time, ngari ngi laa, ndaijov, ndil sugum, gorra uspe rala, mo adoraisa se gidil, direkal bol sabedel askertir, ndimil busul, edo dukkial se gidil. Tay gidil, stopa igas koki, ndigal me, jas, tay gidil, umdasu wasin, agel tear billa, malasam, addresses se gidil, Mister Atyal, mubil outside eh e ugora giri. Akwadi, doli se gidil, tsel, malsum gorra, agadil, diba dachikertir, ndimil.
Eh, we sel, eh, god, sel etera a presiding just Sally. Elangal presiding just Sally, gaidala, ma valo redra trial divisi Sally, wal wal, walo redra trial division, elange, ser almubro ol dia, ol dia isamol, nganiya walo redra natural division. Iga tul god, trilange, apelit, nganiya omra. Bla wasi, eh, s, ngar shel page two, last paragraph, wasi, as President Justice Sally explained eh, ki god ngi, sel eter ngi. Wasi, the global pandemic has halted travel. Namoda omrae. This bill, if enacted, would permit these part time justices to perform their judicial duties while absent from the public. Since we do not know when travel restrictions will ease or when and if quarantine restrictions will be lifted, when they are able to fly into country to physically decide over cases in our court. So indeed, she point the finger, mo trigel gidil, the one the part time justice. Tial eter ngi, umlo. Nga dekalosawadra, al justice, kerbelaw, il amno, no ra outside. Imo djalasabi aril may. Ndi masawadu trigel part time justice. Eh, trigel, trigel Whips pursuant to constitution, adirga mne appointed tira la, couple of months ago. And by the way the constitution, amnot toyo ra November twenty oh eight. Eh, dhatak, mne girila president, el fill up agel position. Eh, ndimnagala, no tok, dumotijas, wis ten. Emori tay part time justice, of course, em ngari ngi pandemic. Ndi ngari ngi, appointment, demle, ndi ela, ngari ngi pandemic, ndigal may. Ndi djalasabekel may. Sulam.
Ponge Senator Mariur.
So, President, masawla chairman, akti se gidil, adi, koran, ndimle posse, se gidil, mo agel blam dung, ndi masawadu tay gidil, part time justice. Ndi can understand wasin, ke gidil, adil, ble da confirm ngi, ble eh, administrative odra ngi, ra god, tra ten o regal government, la, amno ra outside, la, ngaria cases, ma di giri, adi, did find out ra god, wasi se trigel, dja gal, trigel full time justice, ala odra tin ngara outside eh mal sugum, ndiaga ngara la, el sabedel ru leem, bol sabedel. Se gidil, akwadi kaskerni, mal sabedel, bo askertir, mal sugum, ngari ngi, lahapin, el sabedel ru leem, mo eh, sabedel la, eh, ndil sugum, gorra, do uspe rala, la doraisa ngi, edo kethmok, giri, aldo tok god, ya. Sulap, President.
Namalsole, vice president, nding giril, mo ngil, lo meser ngi, len al sugum, full time justice, engla amlamal tal ngarbelawe, el el ugora giri. Elangal full time, el borai kril bela, adil ngar selo el ugora giri, len, direkal, adi agal malmal tal, mo ra adil, dolto tak ngi. Malubam, kethmok, kethmok ngi. Di part time, eh, sabedel, understand ngi, le, tirka di review case, dja ugora giri. Si da direkal.
Rap page two, emesasel language, ngara line four. Nmore laa in eight, emesasel, ah, direktla, mostu aril sel goniya, taqal vice presidenta senet. Omura line four, and pulwasi assigned by chief justice to enter session actual amendment. And pulwasi, order propagated by house, by Supreme Court, any justice, any justice of the Supreme Court may perform judicial duties while absent from the republic. Including but not limited to conducting proceedings remotely or issuing any writ, order, ruling, decision, judgment. Tial ngara la a mulwaise. Ya under line, seyra amendment, dga send ngi ya ol dia isel mo ra Whips. Mung BS el mo, plus, say gidil, gorin ya Mariur, so vice president, is right, not specific, tial wasin, part time justice. Eh, direkt wasi, any justice of the Supreme Court may perform. Eh, ndigera, mo Palau, agel gidil, rules, ma regulation, polset. Tear na bala, emutmokla, wurson, regulation, giril se gidil. Sulam.
Senator Aldabel.
President, akti, tral, direkal diga, wa helpa chairman, address se question, ra vice president, ta wanasu kloto talen. Tial aldashamola, amal disipling mo, address se gidil el, wal, wal digeridil language, ngar alcela la, kumlasai are part time, al justice, adi agal sabi ir, rendera a decision, etim, malubam, to, to bota awitra agel geysa ti, al sugum, to off island, giril mesoi, Sabulbelawe. Eh, gidam, nding, kmasin eh, sel, se gidil, language, adi agal, address el mo ra, are full time. So, full time, sabi ir, el al tam, ulgo, ngari ngi, adil off island, de full time, al judge. Eh, because of the pandemic, ndiagsel merbelaw, and sabi ela, chief justice, il grant ra ngi mung issue a decision ngi. So, under such circumstance, ah, chief justice, has sabi el gongi ngi. Ndi, mal specific, ngara la, kumlasai, trigel part time, adi agal sabi, ra, ummo dama ru ngil, mo sabi ir direkal, chief justice, il, at least discretion, eh, decided, kmasin, se emli, ngara off island, de ru leem, decisioner. Mung tia nga, amal di, address se gidil, mal di one, part ra la, language ra la, ru leem, mo djalasabi ira mo djalasela, si chel, el wal lospe, ah, el, quanta decision, etirge gidil of part time, churches, ngara off island. So, amlok.
Nariya, omra. Diga sugum, ndigang, etirge roguil, gongi, tial standing committee report eleven dash twenty seven, el do oi. Om tok. Namai. Floor leader.
President, we adol mol medi, gun tia shirt, we says.
Shirt, we says. Nga dama sessioner gidil, mo ra order. Floor leader.
President eh, adol mol, me, nganiya, tablol imol report, standing committee report, ma senet, resolution, el ndimnagala si, sobra, calendar, ndirga, ndirga, kabol, available, emna mo available, el al time. Mac, sabedel ekmobil suspendar rules, wasi edel place, agel tablol piece of documents, al set tial, atyena gid.
Si da motion namdung esegna, tiri roguil, gongi, do oi. Namai. Floor leader.
Madalwaise, Mister President, kada, wada, mlada placesel il, one standing committee report, el el eleven dash twenty eight. Nmera, calendar gidil, mac, eh, mobile adapta tay gidil, standing committee report eleven dash twenty eight.
Si da motion namdung esegna, boguntira chairman, raturism, Senator Sengbaw, bol buskira report, Senator Sengbaw.
Mister President, ra, atyal, mosavela gamitir gau, ra tourism, environment and maritime, mo report ra senate bill, number eleven dash thirteen. President, ta before ammouana, dik note kuasessel, reporta ndimle ta tablol, assigned, merakamitil eleven dash twelve, ma eleven dash thirteen. Ndi tia reference, eleven dash thirteen, giril eleven dash thirteen. Ya gamitir gau, Mister President, el lem, assigned tial bill. Ah, tia bida pasra ngil bill, era, sera February eighteen, ra twenty twenty one, el introvisi ngia roguil senators. Ma gamitir gau, amla urior, el el giril tay gidil bill, aldashamola. Ma kote et tear billa, Mister President, ah, gamitir omra, kmasi abodo, gathmokli, asepretal, al adil, ngia mo omesa, uril la atgora war transportation, ma industry. Eh, ndirgal avenue, ngia mosavir, ar adil, guk, ona igal vote. Igal er, tel mosavir, guk, ora manage, eh, ndirgal saberil, sel regulate. Eh, tay gidil, gorra, important, growing industry. Egal er, eh, mosaveer il gukora manage, eh, eh, dirigal sebeeril, sel regulate, eh, tregi del gora important, eh, growing industry. Tregal committee ra, eh, omra, kuasie, eh, ayel, gatmo, eh, girid tial bill, eh, dirigal mosmisi, eh, atgora safety, eh, ma compliance, eh, masterndar, eh, lotira, eh, ayel, guk, gatmo, eh, war, transportation operation. Tregal losisultam, eh, Mister President, eh, committee, eh, dirigal mimting, kuasit, tial, eh, subject bill, eh, dirigal mo ule, eh, ensure, eh, tregi del benefits, eh, mga ra tourism industry. Particularly, eh, egay del togora, eh, ala, eh, meral mo, eh, meral mo direct clean benefit, eh, ra ader belaw. Tial creationera, boat owners association for tourism. Eh, dirigal, Mister President, eh, mal mossupport, eh, sel intent, eh, ma moktegra, sel responsible tourism policy framework, twenty seventeen, eh, mo twenty twenty one. Eh, ngia, eh, under segi del framework, eh, misaadu sel target for, eh, kuasigada, eh, mo gatmo klia, Palau's visitor experience. Eh, sel living brand, eh, tregi del, eh, framework, eh, mo establish, eh, egay del standards, safety, security, mahel, eh, ra rokul transportation providers. Such as, tregel adel, tira provide a boat operations. Sera, eh, deliberation, eh, tia, ngia, committee, eh, amlosaveel, eh, maya, togora comment, eh, ma suggestions, eh, mlaga, gaurusel, eh, adel, maradel tira, eh, al shell ablur belaw. Eh, namely, eh, rubugul belaw, Palau Chamber of Commerce, eh, ayel related, eh, agencies, ma organizations, eh, ngia, gangesteringi, eh, atgora, eh, tourism. Sera hearing, eh, eh, public hearing, eh, March nine, twenty twenty one. Eh, mlaga, nosela, bevera members, eh, committee, eh, attendet tia, including, eh, Senator Vichis Agitaya, eh, ma Senator Kasugi, eh, El Tapsungino. Mah, dirigal bevera senators, eh, nosaveel, joiner tial meeting, eh, nganiya Senate Vice President, crime mayor, eh, ma Senator Robai, Kikua Inabo. Eh, sela ayel comment, sel guk place, eh, provide, eh, rubugul belaw, eh, dirigal malo omra, umna se, tregi del, eh, boat, eh, membership, malo mong boat, tregi del legislation. Eh, dirigal, eh, mal mo help, eh, ra ader belaw, eh, tira mga ta taal, soori, eh, kuasigamgarang, eh, mosaveel del meral truly, eh, gada, eh, protect, eh, tregi del industry, eh, maradel belaw, eh, eh, mo benefiter tir. Tregal guk nganiata, eh, adel, nomgodore ngi, kuasigun gula, eh, features organization. Eh, dirigal, Mister President, eh, dirigal, mal dimla olta, eh, supporter tir, eh, lo omra, umna se, tregi del proposal legislation. Eh, dirigal, eh, mossupport, eh, eh, national initiative, eh, ngiamosaveel regulator, tial Palau Tourism Industry. Eh, dirigal, eh, ensure, eh, segi del gukora, eh, ngil moktegra, eh, collaboration, eh, safety, eh, ma compliance, eh, mayegi del best practices, eh, gaurusel adel tira, involve tial industry. Eh, seltial public hearing, eh, representative, eh, guk Palau Voters Association, eh, dirigal nosaveeril, eh, lo otia, cloal, supportetir, eh, giril tregi del ludasol molaa. Eh, malo omra, umna se, tregi del bill, eh, mal mosmo protect, eh, tregi del interest, eh, tregi del ader belaw. Eh, tira ona, eh, er, eh, lo labal, eh, ngara togora tour, tourism. Eh, malo goi, eh, umna se, tregi del la, eh, mosaveel, eh, gatmo klis, eh, kuasigamodia, eh, guk nganiya interference, eh, ader, eh, foreigners, eh, tira, eh, dirigal ona vote, eh, me gan pitlo, ventir. Eh, ader Palau Chamber of Commerce, eh, Mister President, eh, dirigal nosaveeril, eh, lo olta, cloal, supportetir, eh, giril tregi del, eh, eh, ludasol molaa. Eh, omra, umna sing, tial ludasol molaa, eh, dirigal mo help, eh, ra adra ablur belaw, eh, tira, eh, involve tial gi del industry. Bela la committee, eh, Mister President, eh, atakal Vice President, eh, Vice Chairman, eh, committee, eh, Senator Udim. Eh, dirigal nosaveel guk, eh, ugera bevera concerns. Eh, ngia, amla ra gaurusel adel, eh, aladil, eh, tira, eh, gukno, odarsa egayi del concerns, eh, merah, atakal Senator Udim. Eh, magada, eh, committee, eh, amlo omesa egayi del, eh, concerns. Eh, ta ringi, eh, Mister President, eh, omesa kuasig, magaranga, eh, la adra. Eh, ngia, alorut, ringi, gabalamenta, abel tu, ringi, eh, eh, aradel, eh, ngara private industry, eh, momili batogera, al shell gabalamenta. Mister President, eh, kundaseng, diagal, tia, eh, diagal, la gal blal gatmo kra, before. Ki damdinekroog, kuasie, eh, Palau Bar Association, eh, eh, dirigal, eh, adel, eh, diagal part ra government, mal ubeg, gada sebeel kuasig. Eh, diagal necessarily, eh, ngi gel, eh, la adra government, eh, nganiya manday tringi. Eh, ding, eh, tamesang, eh, kuasie, eh, in order of, eh, judicial system, eh, mosaveel, ngare gel standards, eh, meet. Eh, ra adel tira mo practice, eh, la ablur belaw, eh, giril mo member, eh, bar association. Eh, tregi egidil members, eh, ngia, eh, eh, membership, eh, tira, eh, dirigal, eh, mosaveeril, eh, walomesa, eh, gaga, eh, terstal, members, eh, lawyers, eh, tanganaklen. Eh, make sure, eh, tregi, eh, tregi del standards, eh, eh, ensure, eh, sel guk, eh, representation, eh, mora, eh, adel, kuasit, eh, meran ngilu, sel goten ngar bavon. Eh, representation, eh, tregayi del gaurusel lawyers. Tia, eh, togoi, eh, Mister President, eh, committee, eh, miltingi, kuasig, oing, meral gorangari, segi del concern, eh, ndi gado omra, umna se, eh, tia, eh, mo di mo help, eh, eh, increase, eh, tregi del standards. Eh, ma best management practices, eh, more importantly, sel tsukum, godongangara, eh, mong misterial adem, eh, tadi tir regulator tir. Eh, segi di, eh, kundaseng, gotal, masisi, eh, el togora enforcement. Eh, mo, eh, diagal, sain, mal mo ugera cloal resources, malo, eh, togora udodel mo, eh, wado, eh, the bullisertir. Mister President, eh, tial bill, eh, amal, eh, toga egayi del guk, eh, seral ngaga committee, eh, gada, eh, lo, eh, ayel changes. Eh, ulgiwa, eh, guk, eh, recommendation, eh, ra gaurusel, Senator, eh, sera dogotal, eh, eh, introduce tial la. Mong, nosaveela, eh, kuasig, tregi egidil tool appointed members, eh, vaibo de include, eh, eh, Director of Bureau of Marine, eh, Security and Fish and Wildlife Protection. Mongel Director of Bureau of Marine Transportation, eh, mo member tial board. Eh, sera, eh, se, eh, gerdilu, kuasie, eh, Ministera, di mo appoint ra ad, eh, ding, by my recommendation, eh, our members tial lai. Eh, nosaveel, eh, bay kuasig, eh, identify tregi egayi del, eh, adel mo member aboard. Eh, dirigal, eh, eh, no remove, segi del kuasig, eh, shall serve indefinite terms. Le tia, eh, lagataku, kuasig, tregi egidil adel holda, eh, tregi egidil position, tregi egida armarikli, eh, mo member tial, mal chenza ad, eh, ngi egidil guk, eh, esel director. Ngi egidiamo, eh, member, eh, tregi del, eh, board. Eh, lastly, eh, Mister President, eh, committee, eh, dishwal, eh, mo note, eh, tregi del, eh, eh, changes, eh, technical changes. Di era, por se, eh, lastly, eh, committee, eh, dirigal recommend eh, eh, nganiya, already, eh, sel compliance division, eh, eh, Bureau of Tourism. Eh, ngia, mongor, eh, lel, enforce, eh, tregi del provision, eh, tial la. Eh, eh, mong, wa segi da, eh, gada, eh, kuasig, ngare gel, togora technical changes, eh, eh, committee, eh, amlo gatmo, eh, wara li tial la, eh, mo consistent. Eh, guk mo atterning, eh, sel already established, eh, eh, by laws, eh, all reference, eh, ngi, tial la. Mah, sel molas, eh, Mister President, eh, tia, eh, dirigal, lulagi, segi del recommendation, eh, eh, first, eh, reading, eh, tial lai. Kuasig, eh, dirigal, derelyasel provision, eh, mosaveela, Minister, eh, mo to promil gay, eh, additional regulations. Eh, ngia, mes, eh, necessary, eh, mosaveel, eh, carry out a purpose, eh, ma intent, eh, tregi del la. Mongo gi, tregi del, eh, tregi del, eh, recommendations, eh, committee, eh, committee, eh, amal, ngit, eh, eh, support, eh, passes, eh, tregi del Senate Bill, eh, number eleven dash three. Es amended, eh, eh, bay estiwan. Sula, eh, Mister President, eh, tial.
Sula, eh, Senator Sangba, nganiya, swalme, eh, Senator Udim.
Namal misaule, eh, Mister President, eh, malu ngilitasil se, namal misaule, eh, Chairman Sangba, eh, eh, aliporte, eh, Mister President, eh, knalik, eh, tregi del concerns, eh, lek, eh, grace, lol, lulagi, ontrir, eh, bever, eh, adra ablur, involve ra tourism industry. Eh, Mister President, eh, ga, of course, eh, ader bill molaa, nsebe lo lo da egayi concerns, eh, gada, moti rak, eh, alsumon pasra, olbi ra, blas, eh, ringa President. Ndii, eh, sel ne concern, eh, Mister President, eh, private sector, mosaveel government, eh, eh, ulma gada race, eh, ngi, eh, eh, government, eh, eh, nganiya, ngar alir. Eh, private sector, eh, private, eh, guk nganiya, eh, private sector, eh, sel omesa tablol. Eh, walpon, eh, arasegi del line, eh, eh, regulator, eh, ma adan asiovai. Eh, sel, in reference, eh, mora Palau Bar Association, eh, kundaseng, eh, Mister President, eh, medel, mo itega professional, eh, war, eh, artokta, eh, ma pharmacist, eh, ngarogul, where they are held to a certain standard, eh, eh, profession, eh, specialty industry, eh, ngar alsel. Eh, ulmaqma, eh, national report with reservation, eh, Mister President, eh, ngaga, mal oyega, eh, moktega, tial ludasol molaa. Eh, mal hope, eh, asir, eh, adra, eh, buig ra ablur, eh, involve tial tourism industry. Guk pol ngablingelir, eh, tia, tul magit, eh, tourism ra ablur belaw, eh, ngi del, eh, klo klir, eh, di gese daluva. Ndii, Mister President, eh, sel Palau Bar Association, eh, eh, specialty field, eh, we rendi til kaucheg, eh, ra kudof ethicsertir. Di, eh, kundaseng, medical practice, eh, nganiya, ethicsertir. Eh, aku gomesa, eh, mo, eh, hope, eh, eh, ulubreng, eh, seti al, eh, Voters Association, eh, tiam gata taal mondai, eh, tangan, eh, lakra lu, eh, ra, eh, kundas, eh, wo, eh, rengs, eh, gal, eh, beklol, will, eh, mlan, eh, lakra lu, eh, ra, eh, di si siun mondai. Eh, akotel, lontrir, eh, adra ablur, eh, ader Voters Association, eh, keke dela, lo las, eh, mengadro, eh, ra ala, eh, eh, vorters, eh, di til kaucheg, eh, di tir, eh, gatmo krir tir. Mah, seltra avenue, eh, Mister President, eh, sum, eh, Vorters Association, eh, eh, saksid, eh, ludlia, eh, ala, eh, vorters. Eh, mo la regulation, eh, tir, eh, mutmoq, eh, mutmoq, eh, ala, eh, nden, eh, mo biot, eh, ra, eh, du, eh, government. Eh, we ra recommendation, eh, tir, eh, boletirak, eh, Bureau of Tourism, eh, tolta utam. Eh, alinga, eh, Bureau of Tourism, eh, mlaga, eh, evangela menret, eh, ten ombregal, olbi ra, glulaw, eh, lo, eh, government. Eh, Bureau of Tourism, eh, Mister President, eh, regulator, eh, eh, togora tourism, tourism. Mah, sel sumon, eh, regulator, eh, jispr, eh, adan nga, eh, samagit, eh, nsebe, eh, mo create, eh, conflict. Eh, eh, sumon, eh, gada, eh, gosui, eh, mal ubeg, eh, help, eh, tregal, eh, adel, eh, ader belaw, eh, lo, eh, regale, eh, togora, eh, olidiu, eh, ra, eh, pa, eh, mora tourism. Edogotmo krir tir, eh, mong bo ngababilingir, eh, ma, eh, mengadro, eh, nden, eh, tomo valid, eh, institution, eh, organization, eh, mo rengs, eh, eh, adega diel belaw, eh, mo muta international community. Eh, eh, Mister President, eh, kundaseng, eh, malu ngil, mo dangltri, eh, tregal, eh, adel, eh, tablol, eh, direktlo, eh, eh, kuma, eh, akmadekmo, eh, malu ngil, mo dangltri, eh, ader ol mondai, eh, ganam ombregal ra, eh, tablol, eh, sometimes, eh, ndu ba, eh, ludash. Eh, tablol, nganiya, ngar alsel, guk, soibisngat, eh, tregi, eh, guk, matra, eh, sel ludasol, eh, brige, eh, lomso, eh, aketela, eh, ala. Wa, eh, sumto se trap price, eh, nganiya, eh, milandragatra, eh, imo. Eh, tregi di, eh, problem, eh, tial. Eh, sumon, eh, diaga, togora udod, eh, nganiya, eh, adel moravang, eh, nganiya, eh, adel, daaswe, eh, moravang, eh, mutu guk, eh, wa, eh, adra outside, eh, mesoi, eh, benma, eh, du, eh, ngi. Misalwa, eh, du, eh, ngi, tu, eh, ma kasiba, eh, adonlil, eh, mutma la price. Eh, ndapte, eh, gada, omondra, eh, adonlil, eh, eh, adonlil, eh, abaldona, eh, egal, eh, las, eh, mo uta, eh, la tourism. Eh, diswa, eh, tregi di, President, eh, wasit, tia, eh, mal gatga taal issue, eh, gado si, eh, resolution, eh, ndii, sel bodorur, eh, ngi, eh, wa se, Mister President, eh, aktrik, lulubreng, eh, se, committee, eh, bolbo, eh, egel roguy. Eh, list, eh, ma limit, eh, mla, eh, sal mo complicated, eh, restrict, eh, ngi, eh, molaa. Eh, wala, eh, togora, eh, enforcement, eh, tosi, eh, ngi, misalwa, eh, ndu, eh, akpikla, trata, eh, level, eh, du, eh, ayel, concerns, eh, blad, eh, raise, eh, la. Eh, guk, eh, bol legal, eh, sure, eh, against the republic, eh, gada, eh, la, eh, guk, mes, eh, ngi, eh, ulasol molaa. Sula, eh, Mister President.
Sula, eh, Senator Udim. Senator Sangba.
Mister President, eh, namal misaule, eh, Senator Udim, eh, ayel, concerns, eh, akmal, eh, lo, eh, ngel, eh, kuasig, eh, eh, concern, eh, dirigal, eh, mal, eh, take into account. Eh, ndii, eh, umsuvela, eh, committee, eh, Mister President, eh, godongar, umna se, ndi kawan, eh, bill, eh, ndi kawan, eh, resolution, eh, ndi kawan, eh, nganaklen, eh, mo solve, eh, rokul problem. Eh, ndii, eh, ngar alir, eh, ngar tia, eh, sukum, guk nganiya, tial, eh, ngua talbakas, eh, eh, rela, eh, sebeel reform, eh, industry, eh, domarak, umna se, tregi di, eh, mo, sebeel soba aklia, tial, eh, cloal, eh, ngia, generate, eh, revenue, eh, ablur belaw. Eh, gada, eh, umna se, ngar alir, eh, gira, eh, magutmakli. Eh, tar, eh, kumra, eh, kuasig, tial, eh, tregi del, eh, adam, eh, gatmo klia. Eh, sel tsukum, eh, gada, eh, gada, ngara imol, eh, ala, eh, yawan, eh, tira, eh, guk, eh, mo, eh, telal, eh, tomalia, eh, ngua, eh, okya, eh, accident. Sel membership, eh, sel, fasabeel, eh, suspend, eh, tregi di, eh, owner, eh, er, eh, diwar, eh, adel, ngara bar association. Sel tsukum, eh, ona member, eh, tira, eh, guk, nganiya, eh, tomali, eh, nganiya, eh, klisiir, eh, eh, gatmo klis, eh, tregi del urior. Eh, gada, eh, umna se, eh, sel tsukum, eh, gada, self-regulator, eh, industry, eh, sey, eh, got, eh, 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 cheapest, eh, probably, eh, the most effective way, eh, tsukum, eh, gada, eh, tsadal, eh, gatmo kra, eh, urior. Eh, nganiya, eh, na, eh, tal, eh, time, eh, lo las, eh, mengadro, eh, ala, eh, dimle tir. Ndii, sel la kad, eh, compeller, eh, members, eh, mo, eh, nsebe ela, eh, adel, eh, sel, eh, mong malubendia. Eh, segi del mong, eh, malubendia, eh, President, eh, nganiya, segi del mong, eh, motura, eh, taqrat, eh, goi, eh, mosaveel, kuasig, eh, diwan, eh, ala, eh, eh, di more, eh, gel, sual. Eh, gada, eh, umna se, tregi del, eh, guk, eh, tarabakas, eh, gatmo klis, eh, giril tial la, eh, se, eh, guk, eh, help, eh, tregi di, eh, members, eh, eh, meral, eh, gatmo klia, eh, adel, tira, eh, umna se, eh, mo help, eh, eh, support, eh, intent, eh, girida, eh, amla, eh, kuasig, eh, the responsible tourism policy framework. Tia, eh, amolta utra, eh, aldasol, eh, ablur belaw, eh, amla, oh ngel, eh, gatmo krir. Mister President, eh, hope, eh, eh, sebeedel, eh, maybe, eh, adegal, address, eh, tregi rokul concern, eh, ding, eh, gada, eh, umna se, eh, guk, eh, talbakas, eh, meral mong, eh, girida implement, eh, egal, urior, eh, tsukum, eh, guk nganiya, ni, eh, in the future. Eh, segi di, eh, Mister President, eh, gada, eh, umna se, eh, guk, eh, ogiut, eh, tregi del la, eh, sel implementation, eh, ngi, eh, gada, eh, guk, eh, chense, amended, eh, se, eh, akumra, eh, se, ngar alir, eh, dirigal, eh, gatmo klir. Sula, eh, Mister President.
Senator Inavo.
Eh, Mister President, eh, sula, eh, tial, eh, ngamal, eh, akumra, eh, tial, eh, moktega, tial la, eh, wa se, polsebeedel, eh, gul, eh, tarir, eh, taalier, eh, ader belaw, eh, mo, eh, ngaringi, eh, asher, eh, tir, eh, tial tourism industry. Eh, ndii, tregi da, concerns, eh, ngakal, girela, competition. Mah, eh, gomesa, eh, la, eh, ndi gal, eh, guarantee, eh, membership, eh, mora, legitimate business, eh, mlaga, eh, business license, eh, ngi, eh, eh, ona, eh, clal, eh, wa se, eh, guarantee, eh, eh, membership, eh, ngi, eh, tial, eh, eh, association. Mong, eh, wael, eh, sangaklisiela, board, eh, ma, eh, membership, eh, wa se, eh, member, eh, malubendia. Mak, korabikkar sel, wa se, eh, kalilpol, eh, anti-competition, eh, kalipodase, eh, ndi, eh, member, ndi kadonger, eh, ngi, eh, ngila, eh, alame, eh, mo, eh, makita, eh, price, eh, git. Mong, eh, meral, eh, ngila, intentional, eh, la, eh, ding, eh, dirigal, eh, nganiya, timing, eh, sebeel, eh, mo instrumente, eh, kada, bay, eh, gora, eh, mo, eh, tomali, eh, eh, growing tourism industry, eh, git, mak, eh, olgi, eh, trakamitil, eh, wasit, eh, bol evaluator, eh, segi. Maybe, eh, nganiya, eh, floor amendment, eh, wasit, eh, eh, sukum, eh, legitimate business, eh, you, eh, nganiya, eh, owner, eh, se, eh, karaklal, well, sebeel, eh, eh, member, eh, armarikli, until, eh, 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 tamatig, eh, wa se, kawa, eh, tregal, girim, eh, member. Eh, instead of, eh, this time, eh, tiraway, eh, screen, eh, wasin, eh, eh, member, eh, ma, eh, adega. Eh, akwadi race, eh, segi del concern, eh, ngaling, eh, like, eh, Senator Udim, eh, says, eh, eh, namo kabalmenta, eh, eh, commercial sector, eh, gora, namo, eh, ngara, eh, imol entity. Eh, magaranga, eh, eh, the maintainer, eh, sel competition, eh, sel business ads, eh, eh, sel, eh, shovai, eh, blakar, eh, lawyer, because they can compete, eh, 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 guarantee, eh, ongil service, eh, ma ongil price. Sula, eh, eh, Mister President.
Senator Agitaya.
Salatela, eh, Mister President, eh, mulungun, eh, oso, eh, mulhom, eh, back on senators. Mal wa se, eh, Mister President, eh, gadirgun, eh, tia, eh, ndii, eh, eh, remember, eh, umna se, eh, eh, la, akmul, eh, mal, blakta, eh, umna se, eh, egal, eh, rokul transportation, eh, tourist, eh, eh, di mora, eh, ader belaw. But tregi di, eh, ulela, eh, bakas. Eh, do, si, eh, aldoo ulel, eh, bandeal, eh, perfect. Meran nganiya, eh, togora concerns. Eh, sel competition, eh, shoe, eh, eh, amral ngaringi. Eh, di competition, eh, shoe, eh, elanga, eh, aldome seringi, eh, exista. Eh, competition, eh, established, eh, foreign, eh, foreign, eh, shovai, eh, ngan seal belaw. Eh, le legalit, eh, perform, eh, eh, tregi del urior, eh, me, eh, la alta. Eh, se, eh, eh, banale, eh, elang. Eh, gada, mongaranga, address, eh, say, eh, ndi la, eh, mal, eh, blakta, eh, kuna, eh. Eh, tadi, eh, ader belaw, eh, morlut, eh, tregi del, eh, tial la, shovai, eh, tourism, eh, sel bra, eh, transportation. Mongi, eh, del, eh, basi, eh, gi, eh, guideline, eh, urior. Nakal perfect, eh, Mister President. Ning, eh, ulel, eh, urior, eh, magadamo, eh, ngit, eh, understanding, eh, our, eh, back on members, eh, ma, eh, sang, eh, eh, gosui, eh, eh, improve, eh, ngi, eh, mo, eh, ngi, eh, ra, eh, ader belaw, eh, se, eh, intent. Sula.
Senator Ison.
Mister President, eh, eh, member, eh, committee, eh, president, eh, report, oldub, eh, ngi, eh, akmomtigas, eh, segi del, eh, mal simple, eh, la umits, eh, ngarap, page two. Eh, zaga, eh, bo ngi, eh, ding, eh, misalwa, eh, segi di, eh, ulak, eh, nesain, eh, tia. Eh, committee report, eh, eh, moktega, tial, eh, bill, eh, eh, pluwa se, eh, mo, eh, full fill, eh, proposal, eh, tial bill, eh, by, eh, creating a forum, eh, mo share, eh, information, develop standards, promote, eh, safety. Eh, ensure, eh, compliance with all applicable laws and regulations and reach agreement, eh, ga, eh, nganiya, regulations.
...
Tira gidele babya operators el mla ngiti tradalela mem to front ter tir el eh olakta ertatil mem tamla o fladra ah bauting industri ra ah bekpadengela ertel ngariyawu dirm sebiimana ah maqlol erteh sebiir il il affordal arabatogam sel lemeh okia kartil entedi tir il provider tayegidil il service la transportation. Tia wundasitia malungilin tia momalia ah it's a first step toward standardizing industry. Mal dimo ngari imori adavela tiramodisai kmasengwa ngaral quality ra service mastandar dabol implemente. Eh sel lungil arwodan ngitiya ludasulbola ah momara mofaloa i gel policy mal open guideline el set Bureau of Tourism. Mung Bureau of Tourism arwodan yurulia plan eset ayegidil etiragidil el mo dalte al boarda mo omes ayegidil adapt ayegidil specific guidelines ma pa standardel mo omtaber mal open mo oruroto tia ayegidil industry. Sula, Mr. President.
Senator Mario.
Sula Presidente. Tiamnal sel dosadurin ilmokonabotukayegel isulukmetodo lukoramo rullidmu dukora mo digumral basi tial tia adugutayegidil gotal bagasa. Tial Association ngari trigidil ngaria Minister ma Director Bureau of Tourism ma geyidil Director Maritime Security ma diregal Director ah Bureau of Marine Transportation. Trigidi awa bol adal sel board plaza trikel te del adra tir a oner sa egal bilas. Eh tia wundasitia la adriel amistriata almatmotma gerulisa lgora walgora i gel policy tial lad mal open i gel regulation tiramofalo. Wa i gel mnamadu ora walela sa ngami ti report lwasit morulia. Wal bol lungira safety ma i geyidil rogu ya i geyamoral ulat tial ma i gel i gidele ngari operators ma i geyamomora trigidil oner sa egal bilas amo muthenge malosigra adal mo operatora bilsengel ngara i geyidil standard agire losigra adal mo operatora bilsengal sa egidil standard. Ma wundas wasit unma qasit tia ngawalela mengiridil ama bazgora mulidu urulobentril make sure the dlotro urulobentril sisi. Ling gidele rogu di gongera ludas wasit tial ludas amal lungil dungul moral adavela. Eh i gel dilu Senator Dhim ma wundas wasit i geyidil mem babya challenges il gida mo olbangala. Eh sebe edel orurogidima tayegidil adal ma adal tir ah kangesteretir lo mesubokla i geyidil. Ngaltsu mngari adal mskaka bilsengek eh ngakasakal mora motion tayegidil Association. Akmoril wasit mdelia babi nem mskaka wasit tia nga ah tia nga bilsengem ndi i gageyidil ma i gageyidil i gel girem morun girem lo mskaka girem ngariya ogududel merngagal luamomar tial bilas diwayaya i gel turmra bangal ukobam nguwe mskaka tamara erterga wasi i gageyidil turmrga ukoror ndi kemngargera ndi kemngadra bangal i gageyidil. Ma i geyidil asubeltsu makti tial oner siil wasi oi ngariya adra odalbul mskaka ndi tia nga mskaka bilsengek altsu makhremula i gageyidil per tial bilas el mori ngi ngiamil oralil girek. Ma wundas la unma qasen giredal abay mulit tia ngi eh merem dritmoklimol muul bol sebe edel mesa i geyidil rogu il korawal bol challenges mal open giredal address lobengel tial lad eh diregal do urulobengel tial ladltsu mokla. El mongil mran masubel tayegidil Association mran motay gobera tial tokora ah ware transportation la turista. Ma tia ngal madengil wasit tia ngal bolaga kansur ngedodamran ngariyindigiredal osigaro le wasit tia nga di gongera ngil ludasol bekladlo wasigmal giredal mori. Mudo osigaro le le desemakti. Bol orurore i do sumokrini esu imobon. Mutsubel mongil mran mosurber adarabalu. Sula, Presidente.
Sula Senator Mario, alsumen sumendigeang etirger rogu il gongert tial standing committee report eleven dash twenty eight oldu oi. Wontok. Namga e. Ali di gung tirasortuises. Lutel ngadongyas sesioner gida mora order. Front leader.
President, ta kada narogira i gero reporting ngara standing committee report mother malmol me sel item nine report special committee dia ngari ma may mul more order of the day. Da ngara unfinished business para para first reading bill calendar. Ma muwada pasara first reading Senate Bill eleven dash twenty eight.
Siga motion namadu ngaysigun ma klera kameyvata itol.
Senate Bill number eleven dash twenty eight. A bill for an act to organize the executive branch by adjusting and realigning responsibilities related to immigration and labor, cultural and historical preservation, national housing and the environment and for other related purposes. Tial ludasulmola amo organize the executive branch asumokle odro dalangar alela immigration ma labor, cultural and historical preservation, national housing ma environment ma kuq be birangod el belgul. Tial ludasulmola aluldersey ya Presidenta Senate Hojkonspaulis by request.
Siga sel ludasulmola el mag discussion. Senator Aldebe.
President, ah gulmesa tial khadimleme eh tegakuikele review tial ludasulmola etian basically bay bayse sayil taitol el di wal re-arrange sayegidil babya obisir obisir ngal sel a ah executive branch. Ndikoli lutel lo mesa babya ndiaksal madengekmasel bekla adat noniyati alil gukatsas tial gilsangan ding elasel domesa babya i gal chenses ngar tia. Eh sel wal technically sel Bureau of Public Service System awa bol merge ngim sel Bureau of Labor. Sel wal division of labor. Ngabol sayidil Bureau Public Service System awalgora technically ngabol part sayidil ngari i gel telentengila kuq function sayidil Bureau. El guk tim sadatoora urul Public Service. Ma koramisitmasit tial el bodakamba na i gel tablol maqlol ngara al wa na kuq omorala tokora ah foreign labor ma i gal kuq tiga tor employment el mora private sector. Ma kuq tial guk tor employment ral sel Public Service System eh galil create ra mal koramo o conflict ra ngariyila ra kuq tokora divisional labor ma i gal kuq tokora Bureau of Public Service. Sayidil awan el koradi block gesal korano plolkan ra matosengar ngi ngia rest ra i gal basically ngadi de chensaklela Ministry. Di sel tsukumeng sayidil awan maqlol part tia ngiridil mo unswuwe eh Mr. President, leng sebelmo oh tumiak meseringin sol molmo create conflict ma confusion ra. Alad kmasit tia guk sadatoora Human Resources Public Sector guk mo sadara tial guk ngari aulakno mention ngari sel tokora reclassification. Eh sel reclassification akuk ti reclassification opposition raga balmente. Ma do wasil guk ma wa dabod aplaringin mora private employment eh galil koramok create sayidil. Mndai. Kadiri denoutersem ngeronge tial amora committee ma da sel committee mameseringin guklo konsel diregal clarify sayidil.
Okay, committee guker tia ngi Senator Mario Raverobonge. Ela tia di move ra tial tokora foreign labor ra Minister of Justice di move ngi mora ewangela finance meronge. Ndikal chensa i gel telentengila i gey. Mndigu lodakkiar tial i gera governmentel ding la diakal chensa ulula i gey. Aguk diusukai sendi di move ra labor ngare ewangela Minister of Justice el mora ewangela Minister of Finance. El mobengel tayegidil i gera government. Ding diakal bol loltauta ulula reclassification diakal sebel la private el mo wa governmentel de classifyertir eh every time every time ngari aureisera aududira private. Kamol mol melu. Kamu kabomregel mo Senator Mario.
Mr. President, akwundasindiak bay move ra sayidil Bureau of Public Service el mora under tayegidil BS Bureau el mo Ministry Ministry of Human Resource, Culture, Tourism and Development. Sayidil function Bureau of Public Service awal move el mora sayidil BS Bureau.
Move tial
Bay toda Ministry of Finance el mora sayidil. Se akuk omiweka tial i gal amendment rata.
Mndigu move tial obisia function amominggal ndi kagaru sa functionending ma.
Ngiril sumumbu obis ma function mumublu.
Ndi kabonge Senator Mario.
Sula President, akwundas wasit se seral ngetulolbe ra ulal ma gotnokulsel ulat tayegidil Bureau of Labor ma Bureau of Immigration wa bordak. Etultubidhi sayidil sel placement divisional placement ra labor ulmora a sayidil
Finance.
Finance tayegidil eh la wundas wasin giredil etutubidhi sayidil tial finance tayaguk kendala tial kuq hiring ma i gyal tokora personnel raga government. Mnditutubidhi sayidil placement raga tayegidil le seya albel move ngi mora finance. Tutubidhi sayidil placement ra ah a tayegidil Bureau lo ulmera tokora labor eh sayidil etiramomonyamosubel sadai gaidil tokora private hiring ama. Mung sayidil mral isyu sayidil akwundas wasit tia ngal girel move tial Bureau of Public Service System el meri mora tial BS Ministry mori ngia gera labor. Bay di move sayidil part ngil ngilulotungira tial Bureau of Public Safety service system. Sel placement divisional placement part ra labor eh sayidil sel mral osigaro ne adet place adal i gyal oruro.
Ela sing placement ral osigra adal moro raga government to osigra adal moro raga private.
Private ma sel mlarra labor seya hire adal moro raga private. Nditingilulotu odakkiar tial Bureau of Public Service System ngalgora lodakta i geyidil osigar adal mora ndi al dotubidil memukngara private. Le tial Bureau of Public Service System akuk omorala raga government.
Adang, ndit tokora government.
Magridetubidhi sayidil part ra ngi ndiakal meri Bureau of Public Service System mmm mmm ngara finance sayidil akuk ngari. Ngauka ndiakal ndigundas wasit na giredal mol lingkatra ludakai gal rogu tokora Human Resources esel wasit labor mboldak ndingiril akwundas wasit ngiril kagaru silen Bureau of Public Service System ngari i gyal kuq ulu la governmentel tiru omorala i geyidil la ira raga tutuila i geyidil. Sayidil akukora swatege, Senator President.
Senator Inabo.
Mr. President, akwundaseng mklotutelal sel babi ngela President al may sel mle cover letter transmitter tial Reorganization Bill. Mung wasey mwasey our most valuable resource is our Palawan people. And developing our nation is about developing our people. For the strength of a nation comes from its citizens. Mosema this legislation is intended to create a new Ministry. Ministry of Human Resources, Culture, Tourism and Development which will play a big role in advancing capacity building and employment opportunities for all Palawans in both public and private sectors. Mah tial BS Ministry, Mr. President, tawayel al and relil mosabel el monitor, develop, support, promote ra Palawan workforce. Mang muyal ah akwundas sayidil intentionar ngi el transfer Bureau of Public Service System al mora under tayegidil BS Ministrya belgulak mlasit tial Ministrya mo o olngasewa employment whether it's private or ah public sector. Eng lasabel ngal Minister el oversee tial Ministry el oversee a civil service system. At the same time, eng diregal involve ra development ra rogu il adavela mosabir el mongari aureli. Mang akwundas sayidil tawayel koramle intentionera President, ta kada diregal masangar sel mle transition report ngi eh Mr. President, mang ungukti sayidil akora ah awasing giredal lo meser sayidil part ngi. Mang
Okay, ndiakal ngungilindili ah ah sel Public Service System mal completely nodara private. Le sel Public Service System protektra employer government. Mang i gey mral tul different mang kanga ngariya Senator.
El akwundas isekrisi loba President tutuira kenpo. Ni a aktiusra adal mo Minister ngi gida vilia la akuekla Ministry. Ni aktiusra la mo Minister. Enden aftera Bureau higen do executive order rabi arrange sayegidil il posisyonel Bureau of Ministry. Mang nganga di gambda lau gelil. Kudulit tia ngumsang ni appointment raminister eh limeme mergoa la ah a more specific eng engmo wasim elang ral Bureau mora ewangel. Eh sel RPL eleven dash two adimlakal pre ngedimle switshe. Elanganga kuq chensa directly he's he's doing the realignment. He's not changing any law regarding a language ra ah Bureau of Public Service System mal open kudumabodor ngi wasi Human Resources Bureau of Human Resources. Di gal create the Human Bureau of Human Resources. Di gal sel dia a Bureau of Public Service System. Amo moru ngi after the fact aftera bol la tial la aktiusra adal mo Minister. And then he would come in and necessary with ifan ngaga bay ganse trangaga kuluaseng kudulispe ra RPL eleven dash two we organize at tool Ministry wasi MPI sel enga babya gal alela committee mmasahelde. Ngarama ndiakal abod amend RPL eleven dash two le ngaram ndiaga i gel title two diriga section ra i gel babya misidiga ngaidil amendai geyidil. Ndi missilentra Bureau. The status position. Manganga okmokha okmokmora committee rigid ekdamisabosionra House wasit ngarat ngarat de dilul girela gaidil isyu. Eh bay aska adala argidil asikam specified wasi under kenpo ngaraksiela President lappoint amend eh ngaraksiela President tianorur ngi ngultuira karal part constitution. Tial proposal. It actually nganga olngitrigid emru rala len diakal akisiel ruliala. Ndi once we do the law, then he has the akisiel appoint raminister eh gida ngari akisiel confirm. And then he can organize any officers below Ministry at his wish. Sayidil bay gyal agida adagala sel bol urul report tia. Mungokri merigidil wasi ngaraksiela President ngaraksiel olbe de sel bol meri kaministry ngara nta omorala raga ader talela Bureau medio.
Senator Mario.
Sula President, akdiregal eh mral wasi mral kusila President organize tialgal executive branch sentosultaima ulmumera olbe ra ulala diregal girela olbe ra ulal mulia uluswe. Mang wundas wasin isul amral giredal momeseringin sel Bureau of Public Service Systema ulmungara finance sel bol lospe ra la ira adal ngaral posisyon eh sayidil amor sayidil tetsegarugul badset wasi oi ngal bol laire ngiya ngar lo osigar adal mori ngiya ngariya badset ngil wa ngara mangga tayegida pelebol girel mori i geyidil ya seya government. Eh sel guk ngara tia placement ra labor sayidil ngar sel guk mora labor ngiya kuq omorala oh meseradala ablur belaul diakaweril osigaro miselobonge tira guk mesa i gyal oruro sipid mori ngi o itutiril mong. Ma wundas wasin tayegidil ya mang tia nga gida decide ngim altsu mngodou mral wasit tial Bureau of Public Service Systema girel mede raga government. Eh ndiregal sebe edel subidia President wasit tayegida gibo meseringi magingun morse. Altsu mguktiakal ngier gide ndiakal adu esigie esigie adabori. Ndigongaral wasin ledelmsat tia ngi mesal mongir ra ah i gal ngukmamel madala olbe ra ulala mngar ledelmsay rullil mor sel gida akwundas wasin girel mori. Sula President.
Senator Misam.
If you recall eh first el mora ford o i gey endimlakal a Bureau of Public Service System. Ling all was under a board of civil service. Ulu board eh ongawa olbe temer wa Antonio Belza ngupta i gal boarde ngumsa a Bureau of Service. But tia at one time eh ngar alela a civil service aulu board. Wasandramnargi ma rwantamnargi. Ra first, second, third, fourth. Eh fourth o i gey o i gey amekasenya diakmal tomat sa egal board. Tokore move tingu umsa a Ministry of Finance eh tayegidil ngari. Mmle Bureau of Grand Bell moru recently as of the second term al mosaw emwotsensala emlo Bureau of Public Service System. Engya first, second, third, and fourth o i gey. If you look at our records, emle board of the public service ngarapel. Mang tial personal office ra ablur bela ma ngira finance ndi keepa record ra employees meronge. Ndi actual rules and regulation ma mondai ma ngarapel amdotus sayidil board of civil service. Mang sebe edel chensani ngul morgera morgera. Ndi klabugua donel adiasal wasi historically eh nta ntaa omorala i gal ngolbe akuekta Bureau.
Sebele.
Sebele. Eh altsukumeng sebe la olbe akuekta Bureau eh for the last two years in graladitu Bureau of Tourism and Bureau of Communication. Tidil tu bradak create ngi ad if you look at the records, ndi President. Mang ndi yor regidungu.
Senator Tabalwal.
Sula President, tiamal lotak el banla President ma gadi tayegida disogal lo drsil giret tayegidil wasia BPS algora al move ngi mor sayidil ela alsil se sel dahara sensei tial salmre eden ngi delbuil. Engya enganakr sayidil omra el tayegidil process raga governmentel a announce osigra adan ngi delbuil ma ktiunida se alu mahamal bor sayidil basuel bol mre da hiring eh sayidil al banla rasku. Ling ngi delbuil le mo albuil girdi le morse to siga eh tsega ogududemdiwekla wasi sayidil di process ngi delbuil eh diaga adra classroom eh ela alsil setiregal ngi lutava babya application ma process adal alen ngi ra tial el mora rasku. So sayidil di tarakora awudusio se tia nga albor sayidil ndi tsukum ma omorala amurti al imora mora ewangel sayidil aktimuluseng tolngi temlakal i gyal hiring ragsensei bolakal direkal bulkorra ultavra obisil loita classroom. Sula.
Senator Quartey.
Sula President, akti serala kotunutara wera domura sesionak minur ngi koman de underline ngi lo sel andersayidil BS proposed Ministry Human Resource mal clearly misado ra functions or executive branch workforce. Ndi transmitter lerani amal misado ra public and private sector ndi ndiakamensiona private sector. Akwundasindirekal domasada tablol tokor ngariya aududira adal oruro ngariya credentials ingertir. Yakmuntigal wasi babya time i gyal credentials ingertir. Ah girel moitul mora i gyal babya alad al understand the credentials. Le sel tsukumeng moitul dimora wonel Bureau diakal understand the credentials eh sayidil ngiya mo meuda oruro ling ngar babya time ndiakal understand wasi ngara standard ra oruro especially ngal melgora tokora hil. Sula.
Senator Aldebe.
President, aktiregal eh omrakmase President merur tial eh solo mesa streamline i gal function ra i gal Ministry especially i gal major department ra executive branch. Ah di aulakneureis tayegidil point aktiregal masa sayidil kansurna Senator Tabalwal ah experience rigidira executive branch mal meuda process raga i gageyidil eh hiring ma incrementa employees. Ah basically ling mal overwhelmed tial Bureau of Public Service System sel babya time tedir olduira weril molmo naga garamaqlol time arada kuq na chensa planer tayegiratok employment. Mang akwumrakmase Ministry of Finance i gyal recent development Ministry of Finance ah tokora automation ra system rafinance. Adiregal le include tayegidil tokora personnel management ma processing ra personnel actions raga government. Mung orading la built in sayidil system rafinance ngariya pay scale ma i gyal ah ngarakel veitra ada girel melangariirtir ma eh i geyidil kagaru sil classification raga posisyon a orading built in ral sel sayidil system rafinance. Mal sumagadam amal luptet guk kovat tial function luuk mo ewangela ona Ministry. Eh galil bay lutel omotise sayidil process. Hmm diadasal madengekmasipra President mle mle silubi sayidil aspect raga process al open mle kansaltara adal finance especially adal personnel girel sayidil el gukuluswe lo maliyak tial mo ewangela i liyak Ministry. Ndi tsukumeng se sayidil wal blaluturo bta krooseng la President ta galil lungila adaba kansaltaringi leng perhaps leng akwmesit tia mal blakatak ngar tia nga babya koyegel aldugu Quartey ngalgora momixi i gal function. Mang tokora reclassification atiaga atiaga kangester akuk la eh ngatmokla tokora for labor labor outside raga government. Mang etia nga sel domuibuning ngablabol part ra ah maradal morisa na girel el sel page seventeen eh sel section fifteen sadaw resignation ra employees. El girel wal filea mora Minister tayegidil BS Ministry lo ai serikmasikama morisa. Se in practice ngi ngi gara government ndi tia nga ilang akuklulimom ah warobul employees morisa na ma girel oldira katia whether the private or public sector. Mang wundasit tia ngariya babya provisional ammental girel mo unswu kmasingala mo implicationer ngi orada adresse.
Senator Ludim.
Sula, Mr. President, tia khadion tiga Mr. President lukatitela ulal wasil sebel maasana ngin mora committee mlibos sebel tri treidil rogu ma members olalang etakalir executive lamal muktegar ngi ma ma sablebol wasi Mr. President, sula.
Senator Inabo.
Sula ngi Mr. President ah i gageyidil e imoramal mle eh eh cloal ngariyil discussion ah sel impliment sel implemented tial BS system raga government eh meronge tamokantiniul develop par ngi el mo provide ra E government. Mang akuramle eh muktegar ngi awasibol transparent raga government esubel dingat tia ngi eh chikara ngua pechikar gid. Sebe edel dingat tia ngi lock in eh mesanga budget tari gid ama i gyal rogu balensari gid. Diregal sebe edel dingat tia ngi mesang wasin ngarastarus raga personnel actionari gid. Mang sel eh the envisioner I government eng ndiregal sebel iliyak la Bureau of Public eh eh system ma Bureau of ah general employment el help ra el develop human resource. Ma just because ngara ewangela wanan Ministry ah maybe diakal sel belgulak mlasing tia nga di mo imol functional wa na director ngi. Nsabel kagaru Sepeil gacarousel directors, lungora, guk ngari ungu la, a, public service employment, ma, engaria guk ungu la, a development ra general labor, a other belav. So, um, in this day and age, anything is possible. Ndiiha, diagal, ndiiha, diagal sel mletmoklamang, um, of course, emal girel, el gorira intentioner a, a president, ending, tamal promote ra e government, el wase bol sepeidh el, el di, i omesa report, way summa summa lamesa report ra, angaral ministry, angaral bureau, and sepeim al, al diregal mesang. Ma, ngakumdasun, ndiregal girel mo open minded el girel a BS el, al development, the, the administrative, ala omdasun wasin, girel gukmay ngalakal motmurni. Ma, kuradi, isohal wase bol open minded el about the changes. Sula ni, Mr. President.
Senator Shungong.
Predeinte, tiadiregal first reading e, mlamal gul pasing, ma mosanin mora kamitim di, ak mal, maga guk, uluswega kuasen, gusengiran sepeidh el meral di listai gal BS ngaktli, emal goda beire predeinte, ma dibol oltoa aigal bureosa e ungu la aigal ministries. Tel gibel bay begiklashel, dal yaar alchelala, eng bay guk, sepeidh el ul, mgodamogat tiagid, emal kuasen tiagal unguil ngarsei, tiabay girel ngarsei. Esiguk ngarale la predeinte. Ndii, malsoal point out, Mr. President, trapet stenel, akti trigal, ganseur na sel summa Ministry of Finance, mlamu urala, entry ra BS, sma aircraft, alora, mal mriun lurerer altaim, el girel apache trablur bela, guk blamai gal, aigal omraising, ngara e ungu la Ministry of MP, MPII, egukmlamo. Mung, malgora orading overwhelmed ra Ministry of Finance given ra, sel ngar eliel girel apache trablur belav, ma, ti voice out sel ganseur na agel, omra se gamitia, amo omeseringisla.
Okay. Tirger roguil gongert tiel uldasul mola, ragutlo mi vel, el Senate Bill eleven dash twenty-eight, el do hoy. Om tok? Namai, tiag assign el mora chairman ra JGL, Senator Isal, eh, short recess. Ploutel mgodonges sesionergide el mora order. Flolider.
Predeinte, khadmo, patiniura aurere, thka, mla passa sel, ilgotel bill, ngara first reading, ma, the morsey next, maqmovel passa Senate Bill eleven dash twenty-nine, our first reading.
Clerk, a bea title.
Senate Bill number eleven dash twenty-nine, a bill for an act to amend titles thirty-three and forty-one of the Palau National Code to reform the civil service pension plan, extend the pension plan to the private sector and for other related purposes. Tiel uldasul mola, amlo da title thirty-three, ma forty-one of Palau National Code, and more reform ra civil service pension plan, extend ra pension plan, el mora private sector, ma guk bebir aho del bulgul. Tiel uldasul mola, alulder si, Senator Jonathan Shoysal, Senate Vice President Karai Mariur, Senate floor leader Cecilil Aldabel, Senator Gubai Kikuo Inavo, Senator Stevenson J. Quarte, Senator Regis Agitaya, Senator Andrew Tabalwal, Senator Mi Sangbao, Senator Mark, or Blal Udim, Senator TJ Imruur Mongso, Senator Mason Yevan Wips, ma Senator Kazuki Eltop Sunino.
Untira Senator Isal, anbolbaskida, omso del, ma ngariar senatorsel sorire bol lolel, Senator Isal.
Mr. President, umso de tiale, tiagora amatel bill endi ak mogodep, for this reason, tiang a malgama tavel el bid ra, onet, onet, onetil olbi, el milas, ongai al olbi ra, delegate ta, solider, ma onetil, ngari. Emo ontrui, emu gal sepeil, maera, ngara sekan ridingera house, emal goe, emal goe ra gobide, tiagidl mede, por the matter. Mung negama tavel el, for the record, the twenty eighteen, FY twenty nineteen budget de, olbi ra glulam, tuba di a hundred fifty thousand dollars, no ra pension plan, but emlo rulli, a Republic of Palau Civil Service Pension Plan Strategic Review. Tiang agora combination ra, a, katelitel el, tiel plan, lo, tira secretary general gel tang, actual real study, tira studies, tira secretary general gel tang, rangsangsel, what actions should we take to go forward los of Lee? Men diagal bankrupt. Mung, met tiel uldasul mola, wayden na uvat title, gudmo, amend ra lula, a civil print, service pension plan abalur belav, tiel di adra government, a semi-government, semi-atan mos, ma, aigal state government tamem ber ngi. El, mo extend ra pension plan, mo include the private sector, if optional, diagal mandatory, mo optional. Mung, olbi ra glulam, momtiger ngi wasia Republic of Palau Civil Service Pension Planner, adagal ngaria enough ludodra alsel. To pay agel girel haraw liabilities, mung appanda establishment ra pension plan since nineteen eighty-seven, er adu merurtial plan ra second olbi ra glulam, e ga digal tang, Mr. President, emle, adu olbi sef tang, ma mantas. Ego merurtial laal, ngaria ulusiu wasi in the future, emmo necessary some changes, el bodro, el momenten ra stability, malubin, successful assistance tiel plan going forward for the rest of the Palawan workers. Mung waishen for over thirty years, actual studies, central gantak, the pension plan board of trustees, Rabeek Clewarrak, itirala. Amna rimandra blur belav, dogonig government, wasa, the importance of developing assured, malu long-term solution, el mo improve ra, financial stability tiel plan, men diagal bul bankrupt. Olbi ra glulawa, amno sepeil, moa deport ra actual real study, conducted by pension plan in two, twenty nineteen. Tiagidl, tul tiba udu ra twenty eighteen, emno ra pension, et emle haira gon Bali, out of Singapore, emno rulli a pension plan, it was reported, logius segi, the study, el wasing, the way the plan is currently structured, to the project, tiel study, a project, el wasing, mo diagal udu dargi between twenty twenty-three, radongra twenty twenty-three, ma twenty twenty-five, if the way recall, keep going. Ma olbi ra glulam, momtiger ngi kuasen, mal kloblgul, critical, about improve the financial stability tiel plan, to do this, one, a pension plan must be structured to provide a defined benefit system for employees alsel. Tiel dangari, el plan alomura neti, severedang, alomu dasi defined benefits. Ad uro, mbesentela udu del, tel alba sentanu lo yang, e uro mo sixty, sel tover, embedngel, wasi ak momlahtela ludod until I die. Ap plan la aseng girel, mo malamol, maktiap plan ngai tiagidl ngi. Ndii, ndiregal mo sepeidh le include, ra BS el system, multigel BS el adu mesu isbul mo uro, malubin tegel, diagam uro, et just to join, ma tomor shell, tula se defined contribution. Se, sel, simple explanation, asi, arngabarda, omgodoyka, asi four oh one K. Uro, regardless of udu del, sel, kawa di said al amount, ungu moloyang, alamat serinya employer, by low, ungu ngani, sel, minimal ya employee, esel om tover, esel bo molan ngi, mandali, or, quarterly, or semiannually, or one-time payment, amo itui ra, agadngel, sel investment ra, emliliyara. Ma imon, a defined benefits, loa, alu ilte lael, employer ra, lo alu ilte lael, ekutke, logod, but another, telar rap, mgodtngai agel, bilang, malila employer ra, ndii om diagam art, ekadim lay, until you die. Segi, ya defined benefits, ya defined contribution, alsel, loa agel, lang, any time, shambu, merluro, naga tover, may, malu bedam, em, la, sel po shambu tai, ndigam om la, sel, la, emlili, ala, lobongela, agadlanget, agel, investment, ri, malu uro, ekamala, amkasai, diagal pap, ekamala. Mung, tiel vila, mal, korakma, et ndi olbi ra glulawa, momtiger ngi kuasen, directly, seba isegi, engirel mo amend the title thirty-three, ma forty-one, and you will explain why we do that. Direct, nakamali msaadra, let's establish findings. De klabri ra glulam, momtiger ngi kuasen, sel de kamban, ra, tiagidl system, al dangari, ra, keta uro, eguk, chenserni, multigel, diagam uro. Of course, gudmo ngaria, liberationer gide, al sekar madur, beni, gudmo chur, asin, karat tirigel, almarikli, at the stage, engarat tirigel, ngaria optional, kil join, engarat tirigel, must join the new system. E sel ulvai segi, debu lahtela, eh, end result, amo reduce a benefits payout from the fund, which in turn will increase the income to the Republic of Palau Pension Plan, thereby promoting financial viability, malu sustainability tiel program. En altaim, ndi imon, plan dangari, esadro mo kosos, katosikali ulel, omaria, another plan. Egal tul plan a uro, fifty years from, et tiabul la, fifty years from today, namodak, segi, del plan, al dangari, al sil, sel agi mo hundred percent, esegida BS, plan, lo, gudashe defined contribution, or four oh one K. Mung segi da blakatakl, domso del tiang, egodam record, tiamingara, Larry Porter, kada un meeting, leader si, ra, tiel nomera glulbi, president, Baladal, ma ministers, rubul belava, ibilibra, butulbi, emno ngia uro, ngi, a vice president, gide amal madangli, ma senatori di amal madangli, ma president tamdangli, le mna ngia working group, lobantir, leader si, bet tiel lai, lo, lo giwa president, ma, a vice president, du di, sel tai, ma floor leader, Senate sel tai, ma Spigier, ma Vice Spigier House, or, tri olbi, ma, floor leader, ngakal lobantir, ma presidential mongso, ma Minister Sadang, view, a view meeting, enganya floor leader ngi, chief of staff, president, direct, emlosapam, lobongela, a pension plan. E debesion tiang, tova taudodra, a olbi ra, FY twenty eighteen, emgatmokla, a reporter twenty nineteen, egide tiel loban, marilang, ema, sepeidh le entertain ngi la Senate. Nita support, Rbecla, ad, aktiregal malobrengasuli, Rbecla, de Mr. President, Hjalnokmak, eh, signa tiang, eh, with your blessing. Sula tiang.
Tirger roguil gongert tiel uldasul mola, ragutlo mi vel do hoy. Hoy. Om tok? Namai, tiag assign el mora gamitira, waycenminz. Flolider.
Predeinte, abradormol, me, me, untira short recess, eh, de termes, seigal, BS information, mlamie.
Short recess. Ploutel mgodonges sesionergide el mora order. Flolider.
Hoy, predeinte, abradormol, mra, bill calendar gide, e, ngaria agel BS communication, amna ra, sel bital bla, House of Delegates, emai. Ma, laltame, ke, lia motion, el suspenda, arulsir gide, bol sepeidh place, aigal, tablol communication, amna House of Delegates, eh, House of Delegate Communication eleven dash eighteen. Et tiang a girel sel, Senate Bill eleven dash nineteen, HD one, ma diregal House of Delegates Communication eleven dash nineteen, al girel sel House Bill eleven dash twenty-five, eh, dash two, HD two. Bol sepeidh place, aigil tul, suspenda arulsir, sepeidh place, aigil tul, eh, proprater patakal, neremie, Mr. President.
Sena motion, namdunges cheg, namtirger roguil gongeldu hoy. Om tok? Namai, flolider.
Alway segi, so place, agel, eh, communication, madi denaut, segi, del House of Delegates Communication eleven dash eighteen, eh, se, mora, eh, dur reading, kada diregal, mo place, endinga dur reading, eh, diregal ngari, sel, communication, al girel, House Bill eleven dash, twenty-five, dash two, HD two, al diregal, mora bill calendar, ma kada place, endinga first reading. Kada, continue, mra, a first reading, ma, movel passa House Bill eleven dash two dash one, HD one, ra, kotlo mi vel.
Sena motion, namdunges, uvat title, clerk.
Oh, lim, udi, at title.
Clerk, a bea title.
House Bill number eleven dash two dash one, HD one, a bill for an act to amend section twelve oh four of title twenty-seven of the Palau National Code to regulate the harvesting of specified giant clam species, except for cultured clams, to allow additional state regulation and the establishment of state permitting systems for the harvesting of giant clams, to amend chapter thirty-four of title twenty-four of the Palau National Code to require the Ministry of Natural Resources, Environment and Tourism to replenish the population of giant clams within PAN, Protected Areas Network, sites and other state designated sites in the Republic, to amend section twelve eleven of title twenty-seven of the Palau National Code to strengthen the reporting requirements of the Bureau of Marine Resources with respect to its clam sustainability project and for other related purposes. Tiel uldasul mola, amlo da section twelve oh four of title twenty-seven, a Palau National Code to regulate ra omalay, ultragoque species ra kim, eh, diagal uldimokleni agel culture dal kim. Mu guongea additional, el ula state, ma ogutbeela permitting, permitting system ra omalay kim. Momlo da chapter thirty-four of title twenty-four, a Palau National Code, and more equara Ministry of Natural Resources, Environment, and Tourism, men replenish, agel kim, emwar alsel la pan site, ma guk bebir a basuel state, amla designated. Momlo da section twelve eleven, of title twenty-seven, a PNC, el momlisi, a reporting requirement, ra Bureau of Marine Resources, loyaq omol, el mora clam sustainability projects. Tiel uldasul mola, alulder si, ah, delegate Sebastian R. Marino, Marbeq Aladala, House of Delegates, a eleventh olbi ra glulam.
Senator Mariur.
Um, sula predeinte, ak mal, otangia, otangia house, el girel, at tiel uldasul mola, predeinte, ndii triga ungu la aigal state. Akasi ulgu, mgodoway, rulial laal, bay di, adoraisa state, mti ra, madisaidel merula, agidl, ser saruagim, ma, el ati asel, domuunin, ungu algora, national government, am, aganela agid, emo riplenis, agel, ser saruagim. Radbay di, Mr. State, mti ra ungu la, mese bulngos, set tomorrow, at me, me, a marine resource, se gukma agel, ngelgel agim, mo dual. Ndigadu man, mrengasulil, girel, tiagidl uldasul, amalasm, lo, mo, eh, mdoisa aigal kim, ndii tiang a, diregal, me, tover, tiel nomera glulbi ra glulal, diregal, wa nomera, lado ul girel. Redigal wasip, aigal state, mti ra regulator, aigal omlu la, gim, rthir, ma. Mung, ungu uldas, mdi, sel, esel gamitil, mo ungu la, ringi, diregal, bol wesegi, diregal, lauro, lobongela state. Kudengel wasin, ngaria bebir a state, el guk, tiil merula, lir mula, bulra, kim, ma diagal olail, telar rap, sel lutel, mo, guknamor ngi. Egi de, predeinte, umsula.
Tiel summa tsorira, kim, e di lo musa kim, ra marine resource, lola bulmablurir, lolal melorulal. Adang akmul, mongra, e minister, sungbaw.
Se, Mr. President, tiama loil uldas, ire, bom asanin morse, a proprater kamitie, lupter gora, mo, msumbringi, we rato, teg actional gire.
Tirger roguil gongert tiel uldasul mola, ragutlo mi vel do hoy. Om tok? Assign el mora senator, sungbaw. Flolider.
Floor Leader.
President, kadam morsel ulbon ol bill na ra first reading, maq move pastra House Bill number eleven dash twenty five, HD two, ra first reading.
Si da motion namdu ne segn, ma klergam iwe taito. Mgodengas session ergid el mora order. Floor Leader.
President Akalmut, kadam ne rolya motion el pastra first reading, sel House Bill number eleven dash twenty five, HD two, maq diklu terestate, ringi damna risesman, diklu terestate motion edon ti ra segn. Klergam iwe taito.
House Bill number eleven dash twenty five dash two, HD two. A bill for an act to organize the executive branch by adjusting and realigning responsibilities related to immigration and labor, cultural and historical preservation, national housing, and the environment, to amend twenty four PNC subsection twelve four three A and B, and to amend twenty seven PNC subsection twelve oh four R and for other related purposes. Galuldasul Molla, organize the executive branch, sum ok le odred rangar alela immigration and labor, cultural and historical preservation, national housing, environment. Momalod ra twenty four PNC subsection twelve four three A, ma b, and momalod ra twenty seven PNC subsection twelve oh four R, ma okukpe birangod. Al Belgul, Galuldasul Molla, Alul Dersi, a speaker Sabino Anastasia by request.
Tirgen rogul gonger Galuldasul Molla, ra kutl omi weldu oi. Om tok, namay, assign mora Chairman Ajayjei, ngia Senator Xio Isal. Floor Leader.
President, kadam larogir, first reading. Adamora, ma second reading, move pastra second reading, House Bill eleven dash twenty, dash one S.
Klergam lutul iwe taito, le kadugora mla verspesertiam.
House Bill number eleven dash twenty, dash one S. A bill for an act to amend Title Four of the Palau National Code to allow justices of the Palau Supreme Court to fully perform their judicial duties and for other related purposes. Galuldasul Molla, amalod ra Title Four of Palau National Code, El Momogone, our justices at Palau Supreme Court, amomui meru la ngar alir, ma okukpe birangod al Belgul. Galuldasul Molla, Alul Dersi, President Rabalur Belaw, Surangal S. Whips Jr.
Tirgen rogul gonger Galuldasul Molla, ra ongerul omi weldu oi. Om tok, namay. Floor Leader.
President, kadam morsel next, bill na second reading, maq move pastra second reading, Senate Bill eleven dash thirteen.
Si da motion namdu ne segn, ma wera bodolar yingi, gun ti ra Chairman, iwe taito le klergam.
Senate Bill number eleven dash thirteen, SD one. A bill for an act to amend Chapter Five of Title Twenty Eight of the Palau National Code by adding a new subchapter three to be known as the Boat Owners Association for Tourism Act, which creates the Boat Owners Association for Tourism and establishes the membership, management, and powers of this new association and for other related purposes. Galuldasul Molla, amalod ra Chapter Five, Title Twenty Eight, PNC. El Mosisibiyabe SS Subchapter Three, El Bo, domgodongaringi, El Boat Owners Association for Tourism Act. El momaktub or tel alad, meradal, management, ma krisi el tel alad, ma okukpe birangod al Belgul. Galuldasul Molla, Alul Dersi, Senator Umi Sangavau, Senator Andrew Tabalwal, Senator Kazuki El Tapsungino, Senator Marco Erbelarudim, Senator Mason Ebanal Whips, Senate Floor Leader Cecilil Eldebe, Senator Jonathan Xio Isal, Senator Stevenson J. Cuarte, Senator Gubai Kiguwa Inabo, ma Senator Gubai Kiguwa Inabo. Oh, sorry. Senate Floor Leader, Senate Vice President Karai Mariur, Senate President Hokons Paulas, Senator Regis Agitaya, Senator TJ Imru Ramasaw.
Tirgen rogul gonger Galuldasul Molla, ra ongerul omi weldu oi. Om tok, namay. Floor Leader.
President, te segida, lowlobong ol bill na ra second reading, kadam imul maradur reading, ma, ngani sel imol bill na se, move pastra Senate Bill eleven dash nineteen, HD one, ra ongedel omi, third and final reading.
Si da motion namdu ne segn, ma klergam iwe taito.
Senate Bill number eleven dash nineteen, HD one. A bill for an act to enable and facilitate the use of arbitration as an alternative dispute resolution mechanism in international commercial disputes and for other related purposes. Galuldasul Molla, aruli momosabe la, Rabalur Belaw, El Mauspe, arbitration, sum ok lamondai, international commercial, ma okukpe birangod al Belgul. Galuldasul Molla, Alul Dersi, President of Senate Hokons Paulas by request.
Si itsel Galuldasul Molla, al gire del malaringi, ongedel omi weld, ma di gun ti ra Chairman, Banking, ma Insurance, ma financial marera, Senator Cecilil Eldebe, ma di bol beski da kadebal omso dele, kudusenkyo.
President, ti al billa, bleda pasarina House, emina Senate, le Senate Bill eleven dash nineteen, emla ra House, kabitira House, akuknam suberi, emla niye ge gide le amendment tertil, emla HD one. Ma, di kumtalte al, radibok prestate, ge gide amendment, House, bol lakatak marbet laan. Agut, tamle amend, amender sel, wal bill edra, esel paragraph, orsel section one. El move sel, sel namwich, sel sadra, tora sel overriding objective, Galuldasul Molla. El more, ongel segidil section one, which is in, sel legislative finding. Segidi amle amendment, House, sel tar amendment tertil, direkal, tamle amender segidil section five fifty O two D, section two, fifty O two D. El, diregal walkadi minoral amendment, tianga di emle change, orsel, el namwich, sel domu bertiyake, plus e, the court, sel one meaning, court means a body or organ of judicial judicial system of a state or recognized political subdivision of a state. Instead, a state, to segidil state or reorganize, recognize political subdivision, agadi loliya Republic of Palau. Um, belgula, tomakatakanik, plus e, more, port ra, ngablu Belaw. Direkal ngani, ge gil, sel tar ora substantial amendment, diregal release, el, lualolom katak, orsel tora, a commercial arbitration in nature, masegil tora utum, egil tora utum, amodiakal part ra, my, tora utum, natural resources, alcela Belu Belaw, may ge intellectual property rights arising from Palauan traditional knowledge, including but not limited to knowledge of endemic species are outside the scope of international arbitration, commercial arbitration. Iga egil, mal, lukti tigingi, da ader Belaw, tora tradition, may ge korra property rights, intellectual property rights, are ader Belaw. Iga dekabol, kangera, iga egidil, te egidil tora arbitration. Iga egidil, ge gil wa, tril me, major, amendment tra House, President, amitirga, mesegal dekal, change ra intent, may ge le original motekatiam, dil mutels misi i sel, ayge provisions, ngani, iga egidil amendment, amendment da sections.
Okay. Sumang dyaka kamente, kademo shenkyo, ma klergam maro lorgol.
Senator Regis Agitaya. Senator Gubai Kiguwa Inabo.
Oi.
Senator Jonathan Xio Isal. Senator Stevenson J. Cuarte.
Oi.
Senator TJ Imru Ramasaw.
Oi.
Senator Umi Sangavau.
Oi.
Senator Kazuki El Tapsungino.
Oi.
Senator Andrew Tabalwal.
Oi.
Floor Leader Cecilil Eldebe. Vice President Karai Mariur.
Senator.
President Hokons Paulas.
Oi.
Mr. President, eleven yes, edi ano.
Senkyo, girel, ti al Senate Bill number eleven dash nineteen, HD one, girela International Commercial Arbitration Act of twenty twenty one. Amlamay, el eleven yes, edi ano.
Floor Leader.
Mr. President, kadam larogir, bill calendar, kadam imul mora resolution calendar. Debora referral, ngania imol ngara referral, ma move adap, most best. Ngani segidil, denauta segidil Senate Joint Resolution eleven dash six. Tianga, resolution bil introductionnya, takal, Agitaya, mor be bir members, ma da, ti ra introduction, mal, goradi, beski dakomakal omso dele, votes, edel make a referral assignment.
Senator Agitaya.
So, Mr. President, ti al resolution, lo, el banargia, amle rise girela issues, bil, lota find out, kmasesel, sel luror, lo, ronela government belaw, PUC, ma jaiga, rablu ra xabal, momutmo kra, senra babaldav. Adamno, tingi, kmaseng le change asco pergi, mo, o, dilita be bir state ra babaldav, olmoda gal included, orsel te project, man moklo concern ayge be bir state, olmoda gal included, orsel te asco pra uror. Moltu se, Mr. President, eng, ngania, akalson semlamay, larakalus alad, ma espeselia, egal state, ma aldhaswa, akmulasensel, el, mo, demand ra PUC, e, olgiteltir, misisil, olgiteltir, kmo lutel momodadura jaiga, lutel in state, ge gide section, so Galuror, namoda gal, orsel te asco. Segida, mainel, motekati al resolution, Mr. President, Msula.
Senator Isal.
Akora, orinsa, Chairman, olmoda du, e, koram, omu umrangla, setiaga le, blatal, motmok resolution in the past. Yal suguma, mna, hapen, dimnaga multira, kulu ngit, malsebe, adomberi, ma adaption rela, ebaidi, tngumel, di bol, mre. La kuari, main beda yingi, beda tetene yingi, ra, olbi aklulau, ra, alastel, nomotu olbi.
Waishen, Senator Agitaya.
Waishen, Mr. President, aragor dirgida, xok, mukutul tabi ti, lo, misisil motek, ra, ter, lo olbi aklulau, emla, dekalsbe, el ngara House, ulmoqdol, mutol, tobri, elang, sin sauror, adigal, el banargia, blur Belaw, blur xabal, dekalo mulu.
Okay, bol waishen, ma. Si da motion namdu ne segn, kadam mora adaption. Floor Leader.
Mr. President, segidil, koram, ladamlar, rolya motion, el, el, el mu segidil, te egidil Senate Joint Resolution eleven dash six, el mora adaption, ma, mom, oldon esenkyo.
Tirgen rogul gongel, dugu ti, al resolution, mora adaption, el du oi. Om tok, namay. Namora adaption, kadamo shenkyo yingi.
President, ma, move da adapt, Senate Joint Resolution eleven dash six.
Si da motion namdu ne segn. But tirgen rogul gonger, ti al Senate Joint Resolution eleven dash six, el du oi. Om tok, namay. Floor Leader.
Segida, amnolobong, resolution, orsel resolution calendar. Madol mol, mora item fourteen, thirteen, fourteen, edi kangan yingi, madamora fifteen. Madeteknotra, Missalinas Communication eleven dash one one one, tianga, communication, na, obisar, rubul Belaw, el mora, taqak Senator Inabo, girela Council of Chiefs, sel kosingila Council of Chiefs, ma comment tertil, girel, sel Senate Bill eleven dash nineteen. Tianga, sel International Commercial Arbitration Act of twenty twenty one. Denauta yingi, kadam napasa segidil bill, other reading. Direkal, denauta, Missalinas Communication eleven dash one one two. Tianga, amla, taqak Minister Uduy, Kalib Uduy, Minister Finance. El mora, kaol, taqak President Paulas, girela twenty twenty one, twenty 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 one, annual performance report. Tianga, revise, kapira egil, in reference, morsel, le, Missalinas Communication eleven dash one O eight, ra, bleda, receiving yingi, alastel session. Mr. President, teguwa, sekmaset ti al annual performance report, Ministry of Finance, te egidil revise report. Amlamay, ngara, arstafamlasa, sirak, sa kapir yingil, mallo crok. Madam, advise arstaf, sekmasimdim, karde, denauta, announcing, ralal. Esel bol merka session, arbetla adabol, ngakapir til, ngara, arstaf, body borosa, kapir til, mor obisla, mallo crok report. Bol se edel, motekatemi, da, review, ge gide reporter, Mini Executive Branch. Diregal, denauta, Missalinas Communication eleven dash one one three. Et tianga, amnala, ten, Galululangatmao, merkal, taqak President Paulas, girela certified kapira KN Resolution Number ten dash six, dash twenty twenty one. Direkal, Mr. President, denauta, Missalinas Communication eleven dash one one four. Et tiadirekal, amnala, ten, Galululangatmao, merkal President Paulas, girela certified kapira resolution, till number ten, dash zero one, dash twenty twenty one. Direkal ngaria, Missalinas Communication eleven dash one one five, amnala, President, PCC, Mr. Patrick Delay, merkal President Paulas, girela fifty eight commencement exercise, PCC, el morninga, PCC Cafeteria, Friday, May fourteen, twenty twenty one, three o'clock. Diregal denauta, Missalinas Communication eleven dash one one six. Et tianga, amnala, Public Auditor, Mr. Satru Nino Tewi, del, mora, taqak President Surangal Whips Jr., merkal, President Paulas, ma Speaker of House, Anastasio, girela Office of Public Auditor, twenty twenty one Performance Report. Direkal denauta, Missalinas Communication eleven dash one one seven, tianga, amnala, Kingdom of Bahrain, girela APA Standing Amiri on Economic Affairs and Sustainable Development in Manama of twentieth, on twentieth May, twenty twenty one. Direkal denauta, Missalinas Communication eleven dash one one eight. Et tianga, communication, na, Irina, sel organization, renewable energy, na, direkal girela, okmasal, girela, tora, Irina Policy Talks, twenty twenty one. Direkal denauta, Missalinas Communication eleven dash one one nine. Et tianga, amnala, Ms. Gbaol, mora, kaol President Paulas, el guk komeski, da samri, ra egil guk response, ra, tele Palau Red Cross Society, ra egil response, a til girela typhoon surige. Iga egidil, ge gil, communication, Missalinas Communication, ne regidil, el al session. Eh, do bodyul, mora, sel next, item, Missalinas Business, ma straterler, Senator, sel Maria Missalinas Business.
Kom, komi komo shir, da suspend, orsel misalinas, adang, Maria. Din, Maria announcement, ma. Floor Leader, ngaria announcement, ra be biras Senator, ma, sate, le, la Senator Isal.
Diakti, kanfirm, ra, staf, ra, estera sal, noval, ngartarab, na, informe gida, sel, lassaiment gau, ra, JJI, garamil, e, desama, police, sa President, girel, sel, el bill, ra, auri alament, ra Ministry, el, podomesa, sel version, ra House, ngania be bira, egil ngaral sel. Eh, ndamet tooi, la se yes, e, tsebe, la, gamitil mit, ra, President Whips, ishlen si, ra, obislingi, ra, miuns, ra, one PM, ra, blugub. Ki, di bomkawo, dengi, tirgel, mora meeting, ra, awa isel minsnob, bangela, Chair Lady Inabo, Mr. Bolberek, segidil, li gera, guk, ti al tora tax, before, egidim, dagal, mora miuns. Wa egil, dilung, pulin, sebam, mo, majority, ti ra, member, JJL, several members.
Okay, bol waishen. Maria ngudo. Senator Inabo.
President Aklugu, raten okla, ya, rogul, members, ra wisel, Ms. Kamiri, olgitel, wasel, mori, ya, public hearing, orsel, tax bill, Senate Bill eleven dash fifteen, raten okla. Wantari, Ra, Cabinetors Association, ma Association of Speakers, ra, ti al, utlolbi, ra, obisegidil, ngar, orior. Ah, gidiregal na, request, ra, public hearing, lobangela, Palau Chamber of Commerce, ma, gina schedule, yingil, mo Friday, ra, ten okla. Ma, akmalonit, rogul, members, ra wisel, Ms. Kamiri, polsa, piran, may, attend, public hearing, ra, Senate Bill eleven dash fifteen, Tax Reform Act. Msula, Mr. President.
Senator Mariur.
Msula, President, kabitirga, ra, AC API, diregal, mo, yingi, meeting, yingi, lomodora, meeting, ra, members. El mori view, sel, building code. El ngia, ngara, mda la, kabitim, mlamaga, be bira, kamen, se, diregal, so, mo, podmit, edkoram, misal, de, sel, kabitil, va, se, dal, mutel, mla, kamen, smal, ven, namusbe, edel, moru ya, report, ringi, mentabdi, ra, mda la Senate. Mori, ya, raten okla, raklugu, la, mo, ya, gulli, la, sel, meeting, ra, lobangela, RCTD, ra, two okla. Ra, diregal, te egidil, Sir Light Officer, gida, ra, order, ti al mutolbi aklulau. Msula.
Okay. Di gamudo, announcement, gahmed, boras, yurtu ises. Takloutel, mgodengas session ergid, el mora order. Floor Leader.
President, kadam lo, kadam lar, announcement, kola rises, kora, omesa, egal, orreder, el als, el week. Ma, kadam, goramlamo, taita, kadu goramlamo, tangalia, schedule, orreder, el al week. Awera, do bodyul, momusim, ra, session ergid, ebok, diregal, di kud, te alte al, le, di, do, ais, girel, sel, el Sora, el mori, ra, April twenty nine, tianga, me, el al, ngarwaluror. Ratene, em, ti al, Chamber, Senate. Ya, sel program, ra, Sora, awa, di bol, te egidil, mla, mora, kadrav, tam di, President, ta di, mo instructor, staf, ma, ta di, musa, kapira, betla, adar, awera, dustey. Eh, debora, adjournment, ma, move lo, ngolit, al gal, molmut, ra, klugu, ra, kabsenge, ra, tri o'clock, ra, kabsenge.
Si da motion namdu ne segn, ma tirgen rogul gongel du oi. Om tok, na waishen.